Good evening and welcome to the January seventh, two thousand twenty-five Nakadochas regularly scheduled city council meeting. If you would, Brad, would you lead us in prayer, please?
You meant Chad.
Chad, I'm sorry. Chad, Brad, same thing.
This has happened since we were born, so it's all good.
Excuse me, Chad, would you lead us in prayer, please?
I will. As we start this new year, I was struck by a prayer that was shared from President Thomas Jefferson in March of eighteen oh one. Almighty God, who has given us this good land for our heritage, we humbly beseech thee that we may always prove ourselves a people mindful of thy favor and glad to do thy will. Bless our land with honorable ministry, sound learning, and pure manners. Save us from violence, discord, and confusion, from pride and arrogance, and from every evil way. Defend our liberties and fashion into one united people, the multitude brought hither out of many kindreds and tongues. Endow with thy spirit of wisdom those whom in thy name we entrust the authority of government, that there may be justice and peace at home, and that through obedience to thy law we may show forth thy praise among the nations of the earth. In time of prosperity, fill our hearts with thankfulness, and in the day of trouble, suffer not our trust in thee to fail, all of which we ask through Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen.
Amen. If you'll stand for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Okay, next item is open forum. We have one for Miss Nancy Neathouse, please.
I'm Nancy Neathouse, and I represent Twenty One Seven Association, which our goal is to support the people of the southeast and southwest wards considering their safety, health, and well-being, which I guess is what your goal is. Safety, health, and well-being. Okay, I just want to invite you all to the Martin Luther King Parade. And the parade starts at ten a.m., but you can come earlier. And if you all would have your own car, and you can decorate it anyway. And we start at the Iron Will Baptist Church at eight twenty First Street. And this parade wanders around through the neighborhoods. And it's an excellent way to just see a lot of Nakadochas that we may not always see. And so I just thought it'd be great if some of you all would join us. And it is on Monday, January the twentieth at ten a.m., probably to last less than forty-five minutes. So it won't take that long, and it'd be great if you all would come. And there's your invitation.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Nancy. Okay, next item, awards and recognitions. Presentation of a commendation and proclamation in recognition of bravery for Zachary Smith through the Nakadochas Animal Shelter.
I couldn't be a politician. Did I turn it off? Yeah, I'm pretty low tech. It don't do itself, it don't do. So the certificate of appreciation. The certificate is valid to Zachary Smith in recognition of your exceptional courage and fortitude during challenging and difficult times. Your ability to maintain composure, demonstrate resilience in the face of adversity and the highest standards of dedication and professionalism. Your actions serve as an example of the strength and commitment to deep the value of the city. Let me say this. Sometimes it's taken on men of ill intent, and sometimes it's taken on animals of ill intent. And either way, the magic of bravery, and I think you may have done a life-saving event for a coworker, and deeply valued here more than this certificate and this frank from Hobby Lobby can ever say. So thank you. I'm gonna read the proclamation, but I'll let the city manager say it. You are a testament of the character of the employees that we have here, not only in your own department, but we feel like in all of our departments, and we should be happy about it. Thank you very much for what you've done. Whereas on December fifth, two thousand twenty-four, Zachary Smith, animal shelter attendant, responded with animal control officer Charlie Ferguson to call or report aggressive dogs. After securing animals thought to be the dogs described in the original call, the officers attempted to contact the owner of the animals. After knocking on the door and waiting for response, two stray dogs charged at ACO Ferguson. Mr. Smith, observing the animals charging towards ACO Ferguson, pushed her out of the way and put herself between the dogs and Mrs. Ferguson. The dogs attacked Mr. Smith. And whereas after defending himself for several minutes, and Ms. Ferguson also attempting to help get the animals away from Mr. Smith, the dogs were called away by their owner, and Mr. Smith was able to get to safety. Mr. Smith suffered severe injuries due to multiple bites to his hand, arm, leg, and face. Whereas Mr. Zachary Smith acted courageously and risked his own life to save the life of Mrs. Charlie Ferguson, and a very close could have been tragic deep loss to family, friends, and community, and was an act of heroism which deserves special recognition by the governing body of this city. And whereas Mr. Smith would like to thank his family, his wife Monica, Smith's daughter Jennifer Kilikowski, his son Justin Kilikowski. Russ, I'm sorry. The Zack Martin family, Jean Cagle family, as well as the shelter staff in the City of Nakadochas for the support and assistance during his recovery. Now therefore be it proclaimed that I Randy Johnson, Mayor of the City of Nakadochas, on behalf of the city council, due hereby tender this commendation and proclamation with the deepest gratitude, sincere appreciation of this governing body and all the citizens who have helped Zachary Smith for selfless, selfless, and heroic action.
Is the lady here? Is Ms. Ferguson here? Zack and Ms. Ferguson.
Okay, next item is item five, items to be removed from the consent agenda.
I'd like to remove item six A from the consent agenda.
You need a second on that?
Just removing it, and I'll speak to it.
Okay. Make a motion to approve the balance of the consent agenda.
Second. Have a motion second to approve the balance of the consent agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
The only reason I wanted to remove that item is because there was an error in the minutes. It said Councilwoman Bellinger made a motion to approve the resolution contingent upon its approval by the hospital board, when it should have read a contingent on approval by the hospital board and the county in order to open discussions without preempting an elected board. So, do I need to make a motion to correct it? Is that correct? Okay.
Let me, I'll just add this to that, and just for clarification, I know in our local paper, it was stated that the motion that I made barely passed, but there were three votes yes, one vote no, and one abstention. And in our charter, section twelve, the Nakadochas City Charter, any council member refusing to vote shall be entered on the journal and counted as a voting in the affirmative. So therefore, that motion that was made that night, for the record, was four to one in favor. So.
You still need a second, I guess.
Yes, I'll second.
Okay.
Okay, have a motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Motion carries unanimously. Okay. Go to the regular agenda. First item seven A, consider ordinance amending ordinance number two thousand fifteen zero nine dash two four, appropriating various amounts in accordance with budget adopted for ensuing fiscal year beginning October first, two thousand twenty-four, and ending September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five.
Mayor, council, case offerman, director of public works, and city engineer. As you know, the water well system here in Nakadochas supplies our water system on sorry, got a little distracted there with the remote. Our water well system supplies our south side of town with drinking water. Well number eleven is no small part of that. It supplies about eight hundred gallons a minute. And as you know, each year in the CIP, we program for one well rehabilitation just to keep our water well system in good functioning order. And so staff basically decided that well eleven was the next one that needed to be rehabilitated. This was actually designed in late twenty twenty-three. And then, if you'll remember, about a year ago, well twelve failed. And so we came to you asking to use last year's money for well twelve instead of well eleven. The design was already completed, essentially, and so really quickly, in this fiscal year, we were able to essentially use the new money that y'all allowed us to have to go out for bids on that. And so on December seventeenth, we got bids for this project. The low bid was Allsay Inc. in the amount of four hundred fifty thousand, two hundred ten dollars. This does exceed the budgeted amount. And so essentially, this is a cleanup item. We've got plenty of money in the water CIP. However, for the line item for well rehabilitation, it was over. And so we do still owe KSA engineers some money for construction services. That's a time and materials hourly basis, essentially, so we may or may not use all of that amount. But we need to account for it. And so we've still got twenty-nine thousand, five hundred dollars in their contract left. Four hundred fifty thousand, two hundred ten, on top of that, plus some contingencies, we are asking for approval of a one hundred fifty thousand dollar budget amendment for this water well rehabilitation. So again, there is money in the CIP. This is essentially just a cleanup item to basically transfer money from one project to another. So overall, we're in the black. It's important to note. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any discussion?
Can I just say it's good to have you back in person?
Yeah.
It is.
Thank you very much. If it's not inappropriate, I'd just like to say how much I appreciate y'all's support, and especially your prayers over the past few months. So it's been a great deal to me and my family, so hopefully that wasn't out of place.
You look a lot younger.
Thank you.
How many wells do we have?
We've got nine functioning wells, so nine current wells in our system. We never have dropped off any numbering, so well sixteen is what we're up to, but nine of those are currently online.
I make a motion, we approve the budget amendment in item seven A.
Have a motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Okay, next item, consider approval of a contract buying between the City of Nakadochas and Allsay Inc. for well eleven project for not to exceed four hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Thank you. Mayor, city council, case offerman, again, director of public works and city engineer, now asking you to consider the contract with Allsay Inc. for this work, again, in the amount of four hundred fifty thousand, two hundred and ten dollars. Just to reiterate what I already said, this well makes about eight hundred thousand, I mean, I'm sorry, eight hundred gallons per minute, which it contributes to our well system. Work needed to rehabilitate this well is going to include replacing the vertical turbine pump. It's gonna, we're gonna clean off the casings and the screens, which kind of get clogged up with sediment and silk, and we're gonna disinfect it and get it all cleaned up, ready to put back online. And we expect, hopefully, a higher output and more efficient operation once we do this rehabilitation. So again, we had three bids. They were all very close, which is always a good thing. That means they all saw the same thing, and that gives staff confidence that this number is a good number. It's the actual value of this work when it's all three bids within, say, you know, thirty-three, forty-three thousand dollars of each other, when they get to that quarter million, I mean, half a million dollar mark. So staff is very confident. Allsay Inc. was the lowest bidder. We have not worked with them previously, at least since I've been here. Neither has our engineering consultant, KSA. But they are a name in the industry, and so they've got a lot of references and projects similar to this under their belt, and so we're confident that they at least appear to be qualified to do this, so we hope for a good project on that. So we do recommend award in the amount of four hundred fifty thousand, two hundred and ten dollars to Allsay Inc. for this work. Happy to answer any questions.
Who normally does the wells in the past? Is it different companies every time, or?
They are. The second low bidder, Weisinger, is actually the ones that have done the past few, and they have done a good job as well. But they did not get this one, but Weisinger, to answer your question, has done the past several.
Why do we budget three fifty if it's, is that, has it gone up now a hundred thousand dollars?
Well, it has since the first preliminary estimates for this job were done. Remember, it was designed about a year and a half ago, and so pricing does continue to increase.
That's a twenty-five percent increase, isn't it?
It is, yeah. We didn't, pump prices specifically, I think, have gone up quite a bit in that amount of time. And so we will definitely be increasing that annual amount in the proposed CIP. You'll see that coming in the next few months. But, yeah, the pricing just continues to increase on some of these components. So hopefully, it'll taper off here before too long. We'll see.
How old are these wells?
I don't know exactly when well eleven was put in, but some of our wells in our system are, you know, forty, fifty years old, and so some of them are only a couple of years old. No, no, I don't think the Indians put them in, but, you know, several generations ago. But some of our newer wells were put in in the past ten years in response to the drought in twenty-eleven. But, yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Can I just ask, where are all of these companies located, just out of curiosity?
Allsay is.
Houston.
In Houston. Weisinger is also, I believe, in Houston. Smith, I can't remember exactly where they were. Oh, here it says, they're in Waco, actually. A couple of them from the Houston area, and then Smith Pump is from Waco.
Thanks. You ready for a motion? Where are we? I make the motion that we approve item seven B, the contract.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next item, seven C, discuss and consider resolution number thirteen seventy-nine dash oh one dash two five in support or objection, or objection for developers applying for Texas Department of Housing and Community Affairs, two thousand twenty-five competitive nine percent low-income housing tax credit program. Project name Pioneer Crossing for Families. Project location Old Spanish Bluff Road.
Ms. Phil Pott, Mayor and Council, Larissa Philpott Brown, the Executive Director of Economic Development. If it's okay with you, I'm gonna address both of these items together. Actually, one of the presenters is in Kansas and snowed in, so was not able to make it tonight, so you'll only hear from one of the developments. Just as a reminder, we talked about this last month, right before Christmas. This is the low-income housing tax credit program. It's the state's way of developing affordable housing. We receive these requests every year. We originally had three requests, as you remember last time. One of those requests pulled, or one of those developments pulled their request. So we are left with two, which is Elm Grove Apartments, which is proposed to be located just south of the post office on University Drive. And then Pioneer Crossing, which is proposed to be located on Old Spanish Bluff Road. Just a quick reminder, we have about seven hundred and eighty-four units of multifamily tax credit housing, so affordable tax credit housing. That's about roughly fifteen percent of the total multifamily units in the city. Both of these developments have requested a resolution of support that contains a fee waiver of at least two hundred and fifty dollars, so you would waive two hundred and fifty dollars worth of the permit fees. You have several options regarding each request, and you saw a lot of those in the agenda item description itself. You can adopt a resolution of support, including that two hundred and fifty dollar waiver. That would give the development the points it needs to continue on and receive its funding from the state. Adopt a resolution of support excluding the two hundred and fifty dollar fee waiver. That's gonna hurt their chances a little bit. Adopt a resolution of no objection, which is just neutral. Adopt a resolution of opposition, and then take no action. Those last three items would not provide the application enough points at the state system, ensuring that the application would not move forward. So just a few more details about each one of these. The first one, Pioneer Crossing, there is a gentleman here today that can speak on that. That is to be at thirty fourteen Old Spanish Bluff Road. They're proposing about eighty units, which would be geared towards families, so not age restricted. They estimate about an eleven million dollar capital expenditure, and that property is currently zoned B two general business. Be happy to answer any questions you might have of me.
Did the last one get built two years ago?
It is, it has entered the planning stages. I don't think they've turned dirt on it yet. But the last one that the council has approved, they did get funding from the state. They have submitted plans and have participated in pre-development meetings with the city, so it's moving forward, but I'm not sure where it is in its development yet.
Thank you.
I think they're gonna be starting after March sometime. I think they're still in the.
I do have a couple of questions.
Sure, yes.
I can wait until after the presentation.
Okay, thank you.
Evening, council members. Mayor, my name's Michael Beer with Bedco Consulting. Can y'all hear me okay? Doesn't sound very loud here. For those of y'all that haven't been around for this rigmarole, this is, it's gonna come every year until eventually Nakadochas just doesn't score well enough to be competitive. And right now, it's pretty much the winner from how the points are kind of allocated at the state agency, which is T D H C A, which is why y'all have had applications, my guess, since the first time I was here, so every year for the past three years or so. This is a federal program, so I'm a CPA. This is section forty-two of the Internal Revenue Code, so it's just like any other tax credits. You get earned income credits, you get solar credits, it's a dollar-for-dollar reduction on your tax liability. The legislation at the time, which was enacted in nineteen eighty-six, they determined why would a developer build something and rent something below market value if they could get higher rents, so they realized it's gonna be really hard to build something for people who earn income but can't afford housing that is at market rate. And that's why they created this program. You get tax credits, you sell them to an investor, which is typically a bank, and they pay down a portion of your development costs in equity. And so you take on a lower permanent loan, and that's how you can rent it at cheaper rates. That's the entire subsidy in a whole program. It's not like vouchers, it's not HUD money, it's literally, you just get tax credits that the investors claim on their tax returns. As you could see, this list, you see Lufkin a couple of times there, you see Dieball, you see Livingston, this developer, also there's another one. So I think three or four in Lufkin, one in Dieball. We have one in Beaumont that we're gonna be breaking ground later this year, and we just finished one in Livingston. We're heavily invested in this area. Southeast Texas, we love. We love the hard-working class, we love the market. As you just heard from the engineer, inflation's a thing, cost is a thing. It's hard to build anything these days, and to be able to get some guaranteed equity to help you build more housing, which, make no mistake, affordable housing is a need across the entire United States. It's become a realization that the reason prices have gone up so much is because we're at a substantial housing shortage. I remember y'all's last council meeting, there were talks about goals and what the city wants to do, and I kept hearing y'all wanted to promote tourism. Now, what do tourists want to do? Yeah, that was one of the goals that was.
Oh, we had the C V B director speak.
Correct, correct. So that was one of the goals in Nakadochas, is to improve and grow the tourism market, and to do that, you're gonna need things that tourists want to do. They're gonna want to go to coffee shops, they're gonna want to go to bars and restaurants, and they're gonna want to be able to go to parks, and you're gonna need more city amenities. That's the target demographic of these apartment complexes, are people that are service industry, civic workers, teachers, firefighters, EMS. They would all, more than likely, be in the income bands that would qualify for this type of apartment complex. That's the location of it. It's right there on the northwest corner of Old Spanish Bluff and the Loop on the southwest portion. So this is in your district, council member. It is already zoned to, our standard build for families is what it says there. Two to three-story multifamily, it's gonna be one, two, and three-bedroom units. We've got a range there, sixty-four to eighty units. Honestly, we're probably gonna be on the lower end of that range, but we're gonna have to kind of work out the numbers and see what the competition looks like if we get y'all's support. Without support, make no mistake, it's killing the deal. I mean, that's just a fact. There's the income ranges that we're talking about, so the lion's share of these units are gonna be at the sixty percent range, so like an individual. So like an individual making thirty-one thousand, five hundred dollars or less could live in this apartment, could live in this apartment. A family of two, thirty-six thousand, a family of three, forty thousand, five hundred. These are not low income. This should really be called the middle income tax credit program because these people do earn income. Service industry, I have a service industry fifteen years. I definitely started out in that range. Uh, the rents, you can see there for a one bedroom, or I'm sorry, for a, uh, one bedroom, you would be at eight forty-three. For a two bedroom, you'd be at ten twelve, and for a three bedroom, you'd be at eleven seventy. That is before you back out a utility allowance, which is basically a fancy way of saying, to live there, you're gonna have to pay utilities. The IRS realizes that, and so that's considered another part of the rent. So they require you to either pay the utilities or give them a discount on the rent equal to what the expected utilities would be. So here it's gonna be about a hundred, a hundred and twenty bucks, actually less than those numbers there is what we would be charging the tenants because you have to back out the utility allowance. Uh, all of these pictures, these are products that we've actually built. None of these are stock photos. Every single thing you see there is actually a tax credit development. I actually live right next to one of them. Uh, that one right there, the reserves of San Marcos. I helped, I helped find that site, fi- that was a fifty million dollar development. And it's right next to the high school. Look at that pool. Can you believe that's affordable housing? It is, and, uh, you can't tell by looking at it that this is any different than market rate, cuz that's the point. It's meant to not be different than market rate. There's no reason that you should be able to provide a program incentivized by the, by the federal government and it be subpar. In fact, this is so comp- competitive, you have to highly amenitize these. We have to put in community amenities, we have to put in, uh, services that help people to move up and out uh, of ultimately this kind of income band. It's not, it's not meant to be, uh, a stopping ground. It's meant to be a stepping stone. Yeah, we probably do a, uh, fitness room. Uh, we love to do the barbecue pits, horseshoe pits. Uh, we love to do the Amazon lockers now, cuz that's a big thing that people get a lot of stuff delivered. Uh, community room, food warmers, highly amenitized, uh, uh, clubhouses. Those are the units. That's actually, they're in Livingston, Texas, LVP four floor, quartz countertops, shaker cabinets. This is not, this is not cheap stuff. These are, these are high quality things. So I guess my question to y'all is what would y'all need to see for this to be something you think Nacogdoches actually needs if their trajectory is to grow in the right industries and to provide a potential option for a leg up for those that are uh, in those industries that I first and foremost described, service industry, teaching, entry level, uh, employees at the city, actually, you know, I mean, so I'm, I'm available for questions?
We'll, we'll have discussion, uh, and then we'll, we'll probably bring you back up.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Yes.
Mr. Watt, uh, you requested to speak on this, on this agenda item? Okay, i- is that also on D also? Okay, all right. Okay, now we can, we can hold discussion and, or, I'm sorry, you got questions?
I have a question for him.
Okay, either, either one. You got any for Larissa?
Uh, no.
Okay.
She's from Cisco.
I know that.
I just was curious, like, if you, if your income qualifies to get you in.
Right.
And the next year you go from.
So there's actually a hold harmless on that, where you can go up to, it's either a hundred and thirty or a hundred and fifty percent. The intent is not to kick people out if they start bettering themselves. The intent is for them to actually better themselves. And let's say they start at one of the lower tier income bands, uh, and they, they move up to where now they qualify at like the fifty or sixty percent. You can, you can re-designate them, and then all you have to do is go find one of the, the previously tiered income qualifications. And let's be clear, like, let's see, it's seven and a half would be at thirty percent. Twenty would be at fifty, so that is almost seventy-five percent of this is gonna be gar- targeted towards the sixty percent level. Uh, if we can make some market rate units in there as well, we will. We'll have to look at the numbers and see. But you would not be forced to move out. That's what I'm saying. Uh, I, I can't remember if it's a hundred and thirty or a hundred and fifty percent you're allowed to go up above that income level and still qualify so long as you were initially qualified when you moved in there.
So if you live there, do you have to check in every year and?
Yes, sir. So this is, that's part of the beauty of this program is these, uh, developments are often maintained far better than any market rate development. You're gonna have state agency inspections every other year. You're gonna have an investor, which I told you is typically a bank. They're gonna require annual audits and tax returns. That's what I used to do. I used to actually help do those audits and tax returns at Novogradic and Company, which specializes in tax credits. Um, and then on top of that, they're gonna have property inspection, not just property inspections, but what's called, uh, tenant file inspections at the state agency. That has to be done at least every three years, and every year they're gonna have what's called an annual income certification uh, until the first fifteen years have burned off. And once the first fifteen years of tax credits burn off, then it becomes a much easier process cuz now you've used all the tax credits. But yes, annually, annually, they're gonna have to recertify where they're at so that the apartment can remain in compliance. And so they know where they're at.
Do you guys have any fifteen-year-old apartments?
Yeah, yeah, actually, uh,
Do they go up or go down, or where do they go?
So that's the beauty of this. Uh, the state in all of its wisdom has realized that they want, once they, I say they invest, once they allocate tax credits to a developer, one of the point categories is called an extended affordability period. So now to be competitive, if you want to get max points, you have to elect an additional thirty-year extended affordability period, which would be recorded in what's called a land use restriction agreement on the property. And that's what the state agency actually, uh, audits compliance against. They look at that lure, they look and say, how many points did you say you're gonna provide for tenant services? What are your, what are your income levels that you're supposed to be at? What are your amenities that you're supposed to provide? And that's what they use in their audit, when they go there every other year. So it's, it's, it's a lot of checks and balances, and that's why these things have to be maintained. That's why they have to be operated in compliance. Uh, you can't have a felony and live here. Like, it's a, it's a federal program. You can't.
Are, are, are you for profit?
Uh, the, my client is. We're actually going to be looking to partner with a local nonprofit if we can. We have not secured that partnership yet. We do have one in mind, but at this point in time, we have not secured it yet.
Are, are both of these properties for profit?
Yes.
Okay. Chad, you have anything? Uh, you have anything?
I have some thoughts, but no questions.
I can make a motion right now.
Well, no, no, I think we need some discussion.
Sure, go ahead. It's your turn.
I think.
I do have questions.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
So I'm probably gonna sound like a broken record because I've asked these questions every time I've done this.
That makes them easier to answer. That's fine.
Uh, so my first question is, last year we were competitive. We, we were awarded one of these. Uh, the point scoring, what is your take on where we sit this year?
Um, I have not seen all of the applications this year, so I can't answer that in a truly educated way. We typically are just competing, or I say we, the developments are competing against developments in Lufkin. Um, Lufkin is probably, has two or three as well, so I think they're all probably pretty close.
So if we were to give our support, it would probably be competitive with one of those there.
Yes, yes.
Uh, another question that I have is, uh, related to the total number. You, you mentioned the, is it seven hundred and?
Seven hundred, about, close to eight hundred units of, of low income housing tax credit units across the city.
What is that? What, where do we sit in comparison to other like-sized cities?
I, I can't answer that as far, well, actually I can. Um, the, the entire reason why these come to you for support is because Nacogdoches has more than two times the state average of units. And so the state requires you to support these applications. I don't know, I apologize if that's actually per capita. Um, I believe it is. Um, so we, we do have more than most cities.
So that is the reason why council has to?
Yes.
Okay. I think that's all my questions. Thank you.
I have a question for our city manager. Is, we have more of these than most places? Is that what you said?
Okay.
And, and, well, I mean, are we talking about, uh, losing our balance here between?
Thank you, you're already out of balance.
Out of balance.
I mean, look, we, we've had discussions. We already, our percent of owner occupied is too low. That's why we s- if you go back to the retreat, the goal of infill and land bank and single-family ownership and breaking that cycle. And having managed the fastest growing city in the country, over fifty thousand in the Austin area. Having grown up in southwest Houston, having lived in Galveston, all the above, including having a home program. I'm not for it. I think it perpetuates it. I'm just gonna say it like I always do.
So, so I'll follow up on your comments. Um, so I think that one of the things I really appreciate, both about the retreat and about your leadership, Mr. Beverlin, is that you have encouraged us for us to take the leadership rather than, than to be reactive to people who make proposals. We need to think through, and many people here may not realize it, but the city has prioritized, prioritized homeownership even at the lowest income levels, and that's the reason, um, if you saw at the last, uh, city council meeting, we talked about having a land bank. We also talked about, um, um, taking some of the, uh, properties that really were in disrepair and code issues and then turning them into things that the city owns and then can turn around in, into homeownership at, um, in some of these neighborhoods. So I think that's excellent. I think, um, it's always a mistake with federal and state and even, um, um, nonprofit organizations to, to be reactive to their proposals. We need to be in the leadership in this, and I think the proposals, the, the grants, the federal grants we've been looking for, the partnerships we've had with, um, other, uh, companies that we're hiring to help us look at dollars that help to meet our needs right now. I think we, we need to be in that leadership and, and, um, that's what I would propose we do. Um, meaning that just because people have come to us with a proposal and, Michael, I sure appreciate you, you were very informative. And I, I know you came a long way from San Marcos, but I think we need to be in the leadership role here and start thinking about it. That's the first thing. The second thing is that, um, is that we can, as a city, every year, look and see. It's not just any location in the city. There are specific locations that meet the criteria for the LIHTCs every year. And you find it out around, when, when is that about? When do you find out? About November, October? I can't remember. Uh, somewhere in there, just.
If y'all remember, two or three years ago, we were the first developers that actually came to the city. And the reason that was is we actually get the census data.
Right.
When it comes out, which is generally around March, and then we crunch the numbers. The state agency publishes the data around October, is what you're talking about.
So, yeah, so there's a March thing. Thank you. You answered my question. So there's a, a March, uh, census issue, but then the specific criteria are published and then later in the fall. So I suggest that number one, we think about our own priorities, which are homeownership, and, um, we think about what our very, our city needs. The second thing is, is that we look at the data and decide if we are at all interested in, in the particular year and not have people come every year all the time, that we need to think it through, we need to think what we wanna do. And then, only then, um, when, if we decide that the criteria meet the locations we want this to happen in, uh, then, only then might we entertain it. And I have a very strong preference for nonprofit, uh, developments because they bring, they bring, uh, put their dollars back into the community and, um, our, the dollars don't, don't, I don't need you to come up, but thank you. Um, anyway, I have a very particular bias for that. And the or- organization that we did fund, Texas Interfaith, met all those criteria, met with people who had questions, our community people. So this is a partnership with all of us. That we are all in this together and those are my concerns.
Let me, let me throw it.
Sure, please do.
I thi- I think part of this discussion is bigger. Now, keep in mind also, heck, I ran Island Transit when I was ACM in Galveston too. And that included the, both the tourist component, but also the, uh, transit dependent component. Part of this discussion also, I think we need to, yes, we're making prioritizing single-family and all income levels as an issue. We also need to look at which neighborhoods where those percentages of owner occupied have gone down.
Right.
And for what reason? Has it gone down due to student piece? Is it, or has it gone down due to disrepair, people pass away, absentee landlords, all of the above? And then where those have been most severe, are those also the ones where the land bank is gonna overlap? Uh, we have, there's a couple million dollars in the fund from the old housing funds over at one of the banks, which actually, I'm on that board as well. And we can work with others, potentially with that land bank, to even assist with down payment assistance and putting qualifications in place and getting folks the other direction. Uh, on the, you know, the goal is not to build. We're not trying to build the woodlands. But trying to get back to the heyday of what Nacogdoches was, and a big chunk of that was single-family. Owner occupied, plus the plans that'll come out with SFA and their growth projections. How is that going to also affect the housing mix or the, the residential mix and the density level and where? They're working on their plan right now too, so we've got a couple of things in play. But again, it's to be the best Nacogdoches we can be, which you've been doing it your way for three hundred years. Just think about that.
Everybody finish. I, I'd like to make a motion, uh, opposing both of these B and C, or C and D, uh, resolution number thirteen seventy-nine dash oh one twenty-five and thirteen eighty dash oh one twenty-five, opposing both of them.
I'll second. Have a motion second. All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, that concludes our regular agenda. Pursuit to Texas Government Code, section five five one point zero seven two and five five one point zero seven one. Uh, we will go into executive session. Seven fifty-four, and, uh, we're returning from executive session. Uh, pursuit to Texas Government Code, section five five one point oh seven two and five five one point oh seven one, no action. This concludes, uh, this meeting. Uh, God bless the great city of Nacogdoches, Texas.